...the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
He's getting here.
Yeah, I know.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular business meeting of the Stevenville City Council. They like to call us to order here on July 1st at 5:30 PM. And just thank everybody for being out here tonight. We've got a full agenda, and it's also the 1st of July, so a time for us to get ready for a great 4th of July weekend coming up, and hope everybody's able to come out and join us. The parade starts at 9:30 on Friday and celebrate our nation's birth, so just invite everybody out to that. We've got, the first item on the agenda tonight is the Citizens General Discussion. I'll open the floor to anyone that would like to come forward and speak on any item of interest. Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Ms. Kim Pack Wilson here tonight to speak before the council on the statutory performance bond connected to Prime Construction Company and Principal and American Safety Casualty Insurance Company, Surety. This is the performance bond related to the Fire Department Station Number Two construction, and since this is an agenda item, it's not bound by the Citizens General Discussion rules of three minutes or 10 minutes, but Ms. Wilson, we'll go ahead and turn the floor over to you, and I'll let you make your comments, and then we'll see if any of the council have questions for you.
Thank you, Mayor Weldon. Council members, citizens that are in the galley, and I appreciate the fact that I don't have a time limit, though I will try to be as brief as an attorney can possibly be.
Yeah, we're up here. We have several up here. We know what they're like.
Yeah, I know. And I'm gonna start out by saying a few things, just as introduction. I know many of you on the council. I don't know every single person, but my name is Kim Pack Wilson, and just as a brief background, I'm from Stevenville. I graduated from Stevenville High School. I graduated from Tarleton State University, and I went off to law school and came back home. So, I think Stevenville is a wonderful place. I love it. I choose to live here. I choose to work here. I choose to raise my family here, and I choose to practice law here because I believe that Stevenville is a great place, and the reason that I practice law is because, as corny as it sounds, I believe in doing what's right, and I believe in following the law. I'm not here before the council to disparage the city, anybody in the city, nor am I here for any kind of political agenda, so I just wanna say that outright. What I'm here to do today is to represent my clients, and I'll tell you who my clients are. I have three clients that I'm here to talk to you about today. One is Lone Oak Landscaping, one is City Electric, and one is Watson Insulation. And you all may know those people as Sid Miller, David Bragg, and Colby Pack. Those are the people behind those entities. Those are the people who also live and work and raise their families here in Stevenville. And the reason I'm before the council today is because they, all three of those companies provided work for Fire Station Number Two that's been completed, and they haven't been paid. So why is that the city's problem, right? You all paid the contractor. Let me give you a little bit of history, and I'll tell you why I think it's the city's problem at this point. On August 2nd, 2011, the city approved a resolution for $4 million in certificates of obligations to fund the fire station and city improvements, and those of you who are on the council or who are aware of the city activities know that that's what happened. On September 6th of 2011, the city authorized the issuance and sale of that $4 million in certificates of obligation, and on July 3rd, 2012, the city approved the bid of Prime Construction to build Fire Station Number Two. That bid ultimately turned into a contract with Prime Construction, which is very thin, but obviously just basically says they're in charge of subbing it out and getting the fire station built, and the city is in charge of paying for it. It's the easy, that's the easy third grade level of it, right? So, so what happened and what went wrong? I say that because Mr. Sveen asked me to keep it that level. I say that, so what went wrong? What went wrong is that Prime Construction failed to pay their subcontractors, and they failed to pay them all a lot along the way. They would pay and then not pay, and they would pay and not pay. And just as an aside, there are other subcontractors besides my clients who have not been paid for the work at Fire Station Number Two. I've personally spoken with at least one of those and have gotten names of others. I don't represent those people, and not that they don't deserve to get paid potentially, but that, those aren't my clients. But I will say that there are other people besides my clients who have not been paid. So, why is it the city's problem? Or why am I making it the city's problem, or challenging you that it's the city's problem? And I'm saying that because all along, the city was informed by my clients that they were not getting paid. And I have, I have an extensive chronology that I have to do for myself, and I'm just gonna hit the highlights for y'all, and the first time that City Electric sent some emails to the contractor was back on, in July 19th, they hadn't gotten paid. The first time that I have an email from City Electric to the city mentioning that we haven't gotten paid for invoices is October 2nd, 2013. There were some past due invoices from August at that point. Now, you all who've been involved in city finances and construction know that it's not as though work gets done and the job gets paid two days later. There's some lag time, but August to October is too far of a lag time. So, beginning in October, the city knew that City Electric was not getting paid, because City Electric kept sending emails to the city. November 2nd, or, excuse me, November 7th, I wanna make sure I get my dates right, there was an email from City Electric to the city, December 27th, December 30th, January 6th of 2014. Lone Oak Landscaping on January 21st, 2014, also sent an email to the city. On February 4th, an email was sent from City Electric to the city, again saying, "We haven't gotten paid." Now, the project was occupied in October, and then we're talking about in February, my clients still have not gotten paid. We're talking about work that was done in 2013. The landscaping work was done in 2013. City Electric did some work along in 2014, I think, or late 2013, but the landscaping work was all done. And still, in February of 2014, my clients haven't gotten paid, and they're still sending notices to the city saying, "We haven't gotten paid. We haven't gotten paid." In the meantime, there's also phone conversations and discussions, and those are happening also with the city, and my clients are being assured, "Don't worry, we'll take care of you. We'll get you paid. We will not pay Prime Construction until you are paid." On February 6th, the retainage payment was paid to Prime Construction. Two days after my client sent an email to the city, "We haven't gotten paid. What's, what's the story?" And this is not, they, they hadn't gotten paid for, for work that they had previously done. There's two things going on, obviously, with the payments. One is the work, and then one is the retainage. There's 5% retainage on this contract. The final payment to Prime Construction was their 5% retainage. Prime Construction, when they signed their final retainage affidavit requesting payment, said, "Everybody's been paid." They hadn't been, and the city knew it. Lone Oak had not been paid. The bulk of what is owed to Lone Oak Landscaping is not retainage. The amount that's owed to Watson Insulation is retainage, and the amount that's owed to City Electric is a combination of retainage and invoices. So, when Prime Construction provided the city of Stevenville an affidavit saying, "We've paid everybody," that was not true, and the city knew it. It would be one thing if it was not true and the city didn't know it. These other subcontractors that haven't gotten paid never let the city know they weren't getting paid, okay? They just haven't gotten paid at the retainage. But my clients let the city know every step of the way, "We are not getting paid for invoices, and we want your help in getting that fixed." Getting told by the city, "Don't worry, we're gonna take care of you. We will not release a payment to the prime contractor until you have been paid." That didn't happen. I have, and I, you know, I don't expect you to take my word for it necessarily. After all, I am a lawyer. But what I do have is our copies of the emails, and I only have some of them. I mean, I only made copies of some of them. I'm happy for y'all to have them. I also have copies of the, which y'all have and probably have seen, of the final bills paid affidavit, and so I can pass those out if you want them, and I'll just go ahead and do that, so you don't have to speak. And the affidavit that was made clearly was not, was not accurate, and the city knew it. It would be one thing if the city didn't know it, but the city did know it, and made representations to my clients that they would get paid. So, what's the right thing to do? Uh, let me back up. My understanding is that the contractor didn't pay because they received the funds from the city, and the next day their account got offset or swiped for debts that they owe to other people. I don't know, I have no independent knowledge of that. That's just what I've been told. Be that as it may, there are lots of things that the city could have done to prevent that, and lots of things that owners do in construction contracts to prevent that. They do joint check agreements. I'm dealing with another situation right now with a school that has the same problem with the contractor. The prime contractor is slow to pay, and so they're doing joint check agreements, which means that anytime the, the general contractor wants, wants a payment, they have to say who else is owed, and that has to be a joint check with that person and the subcontractor. That could have been done. The city could have forced the general contractor to make those payments and get final bills paid affidavits and releases from the subcontractors. That could have been done, and it wasn't. So what's right? What's right is for those subcontractors to get paid, because they relied on the city to do what the city was supposed to do, and that didn't happen, and that the city told them to do, and that didn't happen in this case. So what's, what's legal? Because we all know that sometimes what's right and what's legal aren't the same, unfortunately. And you will probably hear about sovereign immunity, where the state and municipalities can't get sued because they're immune from suit. We do that for lots of good reasons. We don't want everybody running around suing our governmental entities and wasting a bunch of time and money. But in this instance, this, this, I believe, falls into an exception. The Texas Tort Claims Act provides that municipalities have no immunity for proprietary functions, and I'm gonna try not to go off into a legal area that's convoluted or complicated too much. But a proprietary function is an act that a municipality may perform in the interest of it, of its inhabitants, and it is different than a governmental function, which is a function of the municipality that's required. So, the construction of a fire station isn't really a governmental function. It's not required to, to build a new fire station. We needed one, and it was a nice thing to have, but it wasn't particularly required by the state. Having fire protection is. The construction is not, and so it would be our position that that falls under a proprietary function, because it benefits the inhabitants of the city. That's a fire station that's used for, in the city, not in the county, and it's used for the city's inhabitants. So, under, under the Texas Tort Claim Act, municipalities are not immune from suits where a proprietary function is involved, and that's what we believe this is. It has to be a tort. What's a tort? Again, I don't really wanna digress into a big legal treatise for you, but in this case, our argument would be that negligent misrepresentation and promissory estoppel are two of the torts that my clients would seek recovery from the city regarding. And I'm just gonna hit these so that you know, you understand what the elements are. For promissory estoppel, there has to be a promise, a foreseeability of reliance by the promisor, and detrimental reliance by the promishee. We would contend that the promise was, "Don't worry, we'll take care of you. We'll get you paid. We won't pay the general contractor until we pay you." That it was foreseeable for the, for my clients to rely upon that, and that it was certainly detrimental for them to do so. Negligent misrepresentation is a representation made in the course of business or in a transaction in which you have a pecuniary interest, a beneficial interest, where you supply false information for the guidance of others in their business, and you did not exercise reasonable care or competence in obtaining or communicating the information, and that my clients suffered pecuniary monetary loss by justifiably relying on the representation. And again, it's that same thing. "Don't worry, we'll take care of you. We won't pay them until you're paid," that my clients justifiably relied upon. So I would also say to you, what's legal is for the city to pay the subcontractors. Now, you may hear, and, and I know you're gonna go into executive session, and your city attorney is going to be able to answer lots of your legal questions, you may hear about this payment bond, and that's kinda what's on the agenda, the payment bond. Let me tell you about payment bonds. Payment bonds are good if you follow the strict requirements and the timeliness of those claims. And when you're relying on your city, who also tells you, "Don't file a lien," then you sort of miss out on those times, and it's a very quick turnaround. We've made a claim on the payment bond, and that's been denied. Now, does that mean we won't pursue that further? Yes. Am I a little bit concerned about the timeframes of the payment bond? Yeah. You have to file a claim for retainage within 90 days after final completion. The insurance company is taking the position that substantial completion is final completion. That was back in October. And we were still talking about not getting paid for invoices and doing the work in November and December, so that timeframe has passed. My clients choose to live and work in Stevenville, and they too think the city of Stevenville is a wonderful place, or they wouldn't be here. But in this case, the city has led them astray, and the city made promises that Prime wouldn't get paid until they'd been paid, that they would get taken care of, that they didn't need to file a lien. They relied upon the city's assurance of payments. They relied upon their knowledge of the usual and customary course of conduct with construction, which was that once an owner realizes and knows that there's some problem with the payments, the owner starts taking some actions to protect itself and its project from paying a general contractor that's not taking care of its obligations by joint check agreements, by other communications with the contractor that will make sure that the subs get paid, by requiring the contractor to provide releases and final bills paid affidavits, and that did not happen in this case. Their reliance upon the city has cost them a collective $64,106.25.
Say that again? The three of them?
The three of them collectively. Yeah, I'm gonna break that down for you, and I think that's... Lone Oak is owed $34,346.50. City Electric is owed $27,069.60. And by the way, Lone Oak Landscaping, their total, their total project cost was like $36,000. They only got $2,000 of theirs. I mean, they, most of their money that's owed to them truly is invoices that didn't get paid, not retainage, which the contractor said they had paid by the final bills paid Watson Insulation is owed $2,690.15, and that's all retainage. City Electric's is a combination of retainage and invoices, the bulk of which is retainage.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, could I, can I ask you to kinda reach a conclusion here, so we can see if there's some questions?
I'm done. See, that was a good segue.
Okay.
Yes, I am finished, and, and I would just, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Sveen?
I'd like to know if you have any questions.
Okay. Well, we can ask those questions in executive session?
Yes, sir.
And, and I won't be present in executive session, but as I told Mr. Thomas, and I know he's gonna tell you this, I am certainly capable of coming back up here after your executive session if you have some questions that you would have liked to address to me.
All right, well, let me, let me do this at least. If there's something that was said, like, did you just say Walker Insulation versus Watson Insulation? If anybody has a question like that...
That's fine.
Let's, let's clear that up.
Yes, sir. The appropriate way to do this, in my opinion, is not to answer your questions, to make those questions known in the executive session, and then I can relate to them.
Okay. All right, that's, that's fine. We'll do that then.
And I do have, let me go ahead and give these out, too. These are the, and I may have said Walker, and I meant Watson.
No, I was just using that as an example. So you said Watson. Here's Watson Insulation.
I do have also copies of the proofs of claim, which are the claim amounts that my client sent to the insurance company, and the reason I thought it would be helpful for the council to have, it's just one page per, I just included the top page, so it shows the total dollar amount, so that you don't have to do that for memory also.
Okay.
So I'll pass those down as well. I appreciate the council giving me the opportunity to speak, and what I would certainly ask the council to do in, in short order, is to vote to pay my clients to avoid any further or any litigation regarding this matter, because, as I said, I do believe my clients have a claim against the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and just to let the, the public know, as, as Brandy said earlier, we've had an executive session where we talked about this topic prior to tonight. Ms. Wilson had made a request to, to make a presentation to the council, which we granted, which is what we've just heard, and now we'll continue our discussion about this in executive session. All right, then, with that, we'll move on to Item Number Four on the Agenda Item, which is the, the final stage of the consideration of adopting an ordinance to annex 420 acres, and ask for a, an update for a summary of that action from the, the city at this time. So, Ms. Chu, would you just give us a rundown, so we can move into this topic?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Of course, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this annexation and forwarded to the council on April 1st their recommendation to initiate annexation of the 420 acres of land into the city limits. Council held your two required public hearings for the annexations, the first on May 6th and the second on June the 3rd. You do have in your packet an ordinance which would annex the property if you choose to, and you are within the required time period to complete the annexation. You're at the 71st day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Brandy?
I have one question. I just wanted, I have the same question I ask you every time. There is no additional infrastructure needs for, if we annex this property. That, I mean, we're, our sewer and water capacity for what's gonna happen out there is, we have the ability to use, to do that, provide that service now with no extra infrastructure on our part.
The existing infrastructure will sustain the uses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Brandy? All right.
I have a question.
All right.
You visited with Dr. DiTavio about this...
Mm-hmm.
...project, and if we don't, if we don't vote to annex, we have another option that we're gonna consider, which I think is the next item...
Right.
...on the agenda. And after visiting with him, do you think that the other alternative is, would be acceptable to Tarleton? To meet, I make that back, back up, I said that. It would meet Tarleton's needs, or would it not? Or do they have some concerns about it meeting their needs?
The, the basis of my discussion was back to the root of the request, and that's to ensure that we provide water to Tarleton in a timely manner.
Water and sewer.
Right. Well, water in particular, because they're, they're wanting to make a decision about whether to drill a well or not.
Okay.
And, and the conversation was, and I know Kyle's here tonight, can help clarify this if I say anything wrong here, but Tarleton basically has had to dual-track this effort to consider drilling a new well and extending the infrastructure, waiting on us to decide whether we are gonna participate with them or not. And when he heard that we had potentially come up with a solution to allow them to have water service, he said, "Well, that, that solves our, our problem. We, we don't have to continue with this project for the well drilling."
So, do you mind if we ask, stand up?
Right, so, Kyle, you wanna expand on that any, or? Yeah, sure, that'd be good.
Mayor Weldon, council members, my name is Kyle McGregor. I serve at Tarleton State University as Vice President for Advancement and External Relations. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Agenda Items Four and Five, and I am, it's my pleasure to answer any questions that you may have, so...
Okay, so you, I mean, Dr. DiTavio, now, I did speak because I wanted to make sure that he understood that the council had met last week and was 100% behind supporting what we understood Tarleton's request, and that was to, to be able to get access to water so you didn't have to dual-track this, this well decision versus the, the water supply.
Yes. Unfortunately, at the Agricultural Center at Tarleton, we have quite a bit of infrastructure for the development of water, for the production of water. As you all well know, we're in the education business. We're not necessarily in the water production business. Our equipment, all that infrastructure is at the end of its life cycle, and we're, we're at a point now, as the mayor mentioned, we have to replace infrastructure and drill new wells, or come to the city, who does a fine job of providing utilities to the individuals, the citizenry within its corporate boundaries.
Okay. So, I, I think, you know, there's been a little confusion about our, we, you know, what are we really trying to accomplish here? And I think this has narrowed its focus down now to be where we're in complete agreement, that the city wants to do what we're good at, and that's provide water and help Tarleton not have to drill a well.
Exactly.
And, and the other thing that we, we talked about was the fact that, that Dr. DiTavio now talked about, was that annexation of, of the farm is in Area E of the city. was that annexation of, of the farm, uh, is in Area E of the city, which is an area that we have looked at for annexation. And, uh, you know, if anything, this discussion has kinda re-energized the city's interest in looking at that comprehensively to decide what's the best course there. Because we, we wanna support Tarleton and their, their continued growth. We understand that y'all have a, a, and you might be able to speak to this, uh, the, you've got a master plan that is in process right now to try to further define the farm area. Could, could you just give us a...
Tarleton State University has a master plan that stretches out to 2020. Due to our rapid, uh, our, our rapid growth rates, um, I, I know most of you are aware of this, but it's always worth mentioning that the university has seen a forty-eight percent increase in freshman numbers since two thousand nine, and that was last fall's growth. Uh, we're, we're siding in on another eleven point four percent growth, uh, this fall over last year. So i- it's phenomenal growth that we're, that we're dealing with, and I know the city is, is walking hand in hand with us. Um, and we're sincerely appreciative of that. So... As we grow, we've realized that that master plan does not necessarily match where we were five years, ten years ago when it was created. And so for the last five years of this master plan, we're looking at an update. This particular master plan update that we're looking at, to this point, has only focused within the boundaries of our campus in town. The individuals that were, um, uh, brought us the group that we're using, they have not looked outside of those boundaries. And, um, they are now taking a look at, at our direction after that last meeting that we had, that community meeting. We are asking them to look at the farm force as well. Some information, uh, that, that I received today, I know you all know, Ty Minkler, who's come, uh, our Chief Financial Officer, who's come and spoke with the council, um, twice, I believe. Learned from him today that we have some requirements, uh, for our new agricultural mechanics building that we will be putting in at the agricultural center. We will be required, um, I, I believe he quoted you around, uh, three to four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, infrastructure is what we'd have to replace. We now are being told that we'll also additionally, if we do not have city water and we're pulling water from our wells, we'll be, we're, we will be required to purchase a tank system that will cost an additional four hundred thousand dollars. So we're looking at the cost of three hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollars if, if we do not partner with the city.
And, and I think, I wanted to ask you about the, the, uh, the long-range plan because that, first of all, thank you very much for y'all, for Tarleton hosting that event. It was very, uh, a very good, um, opportunity for the community to, to understand more about what, what Tarleton is, is looking to do. And, uh, for just a general citizen to be able to show up and hear that is, is helpful. The, the council and, and our previous discussions about this last Tuesday was, was really eager, and I, and I think that's why when you, when we talk tonight about Agenda Item, uh, Number Six, we, we are eager to partner with Tarleton in some of these planning efforts so that we can integrate and complement our decision-making so that our decisions are timely to support your, your growth and your information is supported by our, uh, our input. And, uh, I, I know that that's been going on, uh, but I think, uh, there's, there's recognition among the council, now that we, we, uh, we want to and need to join in in a more active manner so that we can, uh, ensure that there's adequate support to Tarleton when it, when it arises. And I think the, the fact that, that y'all are now turning to look at a master plan in that area really works in well with, with an initiative that I've, I'm, uh, I think we're gonna talk about and consider tonight, and that is looking at, at formerly that annexation efforts in, in that, that Zone E, which is where the farm is. So hopefully these two things can, can really, uh, come together in a, in a coordinated fashion.
Thank you. And I would mention to the council that, um, the, the broadest group will be back in mid-July to make a presentation on the findings. Now, their findings will be focused on main campus.
Right.
They have not completed a study of the agricultural center as of yet. Because that's, that's what they were first charged with, was main campus placement of a new academic building and student housing.
Right. Okay. And I, and I think, uh, we'll see if there are any other questions. Mr. Schmene?
The other day when we gave the street to Tarleton for the building construction project you're having, you own both sides of the street, and it was, you had a, a bond or some, some money that was gonna get tied up, but you had to own the street to be able to secure that. Is there anything related to your expansion at Tarleton that you're asking from us, for us to help fund right now, or provide services for, that if we don't annex will have any impact on your, your plans?
With regard to annexation?
If we don't, if we don't annex. Just purely, 'cause we're, if, I think we're gonna discuss giving you water any, sell, not giving, we're not giving anything away. Sell water to you in one way or the other. But whether we do it as a, inside city limits or not is the question. Is that really all your, really, is that really the issue here? Is you need water and then ultimately sewer? Or is it you need annexation because of, you have to be inside city limits or whatever?
No. I, I believe, uh, the city limit issue is something that the council i- is struggling with. Tarleton strictly needs, uh, access to city water and sewer.
And I could say that, you know, what, what the staff did is been historic for what historically done. And that is when someone requests that size of service outs, from outside the city limits, we be, that we make that part of the limits to provide that service. And so what the staff did, I think, was in accordance with our practice, what council previously have instructed them to do. So I have no concerns. And that's, I think there's been some conversation in the community about this is a pro or anti-Tarleton deal. And when I spoke to Dr. Otavio, that's not at all the issue. The issue to me is, you know, we don't have a plan. Any of the mayor is, asks us to discuss that annexation, come up with a plan to do that. And to me, the issue is you guys asked for water. I'm in the business of making water. So I just wanna make sure that we're not having any negative impact on Tarleton and your immediate needs. Uh, if we do not annex you, if I decide not to vote for annexation, that's gonna impede your progress.
I don't believe so. I think that's an issue that, uh, the city is struggling with more than Tarleton is.
Okay.
Truly. Uh, the, the remainder of our infrastructure issue, whether it be, uh, university police, uh, fire and whatnot, uh, fire support, that's, that, that's something that, um, we've, uh, enjoyed through the county and will continue to enjoy if we're, we're not annexed or we are annexed.
Right, and we can always have intergovernmental agreements too, to do stuff like that. So we can provide those services. I just wanna make sure that, I mean, Tarleton is the biggest impact on the city of Stevensville. There's no doubt. We have a gentleman here tonight that makes his living largely off of Tarleton, uh, providing housing. Thank you, because now we're gonna start taxing the hound out of you for that project. So, you know, you're a, you're a great asset to our community, and I wanna make sure we don't impede that. I just think it just, and this is just me on the council, I have one to nine votes here, is that we got out ahead of ourselves because of, you were making requests and we're trying to accommodate Tarleton's needs. And we said, "Well, then, let's just go annex them," and I don't think we have a plan to do that. My opinion is, guess why? Y'all be annexed for, at some point. Y'all be part of City Stevensville. But right now, I, I have concerns about doing that. I won't sell you water and to give you sewer service. That'd be my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes?
Kinda Douggy, kinda, I guess, triggered a couple of questions for me, uh, to kinda go off of what I think the points Doug were making, Dr. McGregor. Uh, number one, I guess, do you think, or do you know, that by this property remaining outside the city limits, would that affect your bond rates? I'm sure, I'm assuming we're trying to fund the mechanics building through bonds. Some type of bonding, infra, some bonding system or bond?
The, the Agricultural Mechanics Building will be, um, paid for through a permanent university fund.
Okay. So there'd be no effect there? I guess the next thing is really just kind of a, a, um, just an image question. I mean, do you, do you think that the system is gonna portray, whether we annex, don't annex, as this being a hostile council and a hostile city that's not friendly to Tarleton State University? Therefore, we're going to take away funding from Tarleton and give that to Commerce or Kingsville or wherever? I mean, do you see any backlash that might trickle all the way down to the system?
System does, um, keep an eye on local politics, um, things that happen within municipalities that we, that we work with. Um, however, Tarleton wants to be a good partner. And in the end, um, we're, we're wonderful partners with the city of Fort Worth, and Lovey and Waco, Stevensville. And, uh, we, we want to be, uh, to continue to be, uh, someone that the city of Stevensville can look to in the future, trust, and, and know that, uh, we're a good, solid partner. I, I don't know if the leadership of this, of the system would see, um, the city of Stevensville not annexing, annexing, or annexing us as a favorable or unfavorable thing. Um, our, the, the issue has been, uh, taken to the, our office of General Counsel with the system, and, uh, that we've been advised to support the issue.
And the issue being?
Annexation.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
And why do you think they said support it? Just to be a good partner? Or because they think we ought to make it, go and annex us? You don't think it's an opinion on annexation or not?
No, it's just a partnership.
It's just, if, if we wanna annex you, you need to support it. You'd be okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else for Kyle? All right. Well, thank you for answering those questions.
Mayor?
Mr. McDaniel?
This issue in the last month has, uh, really, we've really invested a lot of time and, and brain power and question answering and gathering of information and so forth on it. And it's good to know that, uh, the Texas A&amp;M University system won't, won't be seeing a delay in this annexation as any type of anti-Tarleton vote. As, as the two gentlemen here have described, uh, this annexation was put before us and there was not enough information. And that's our fault. Uh, the mayor has come up with, uh, a timeline for a development plan. We plan to, uh, get organized and, uh, start over. And this time, do it right, and do it where it's pro-Stevensville and pro-Tarleton both. And, uh, at this time, I would, uh, move that the issue be tabled.
I second.
It's been moved by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by, um, she's agreed to, uh, sort of tabling for Miss 2014-17. Is there any discussion?
Mayor? I'll have to abstain from this vote. I have asked our city attorney and to consult with the Texas Municipal League to see if I could vote on this issue, and I've been advised that I can't. However, I do wanna say a few things that I've written down, and I, Brady, I need to get me some of those glasses, 'cause when you put those glasses on, you look really smart, so maybe that'll count.
That's how I collect those big fees on those flats.
I can't deliberate or talk about?
It's, it's unabated.
Well, you got some great notes here. Spent thirty minutes on it earlier.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
All right, so all those things, let's proceed to vote then. Okay, another question?
Mark, I'll ask a question if you don't mind about. There is nothing, if we do not annex theirs, we have the ability to sell them water, so there's no, nothing's gonna keep us from selling them water, sewer, as a city, other than coming up with an agreement, is that correct? If we do not annex them?
That, that's your, your will and pleasure.
Okay.
Mayor, you have a motion and a second to table the action, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote on that, please.
Okay, we'll proceed to vote then. Uh, we've got Place One abstaining.
Yeah, I don't think I'm supposed to talk.
Just a motion table?
Yes.
I'm voting for a bar of the motion to table.
Okay. Place Three?
Yes.
Place Four?
Yes.
Place Five?
No.
Place Six?
No.
Place Seven?
Aye.
Place Eight? Okay, that, uh, motion to table then carries, uh, six to two.
And, and your vote, Mayor?
And then we'll move to the, uh... We'll move to the, um... Next item on the agenda?
Mayor, your vote on that item?
We're, we're moving to the next item on the agenda.
The rules of procedure say that, uh, Mayor will vote biased on the roll call vote.
He doesn't have to vote. And, uh, it, but it is, I take it he's not voting. But the abstention is considered a yay vote, so it is six to two.
It is a vote with the majority?
It votes with the majority. The abstention is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
I did call six to two. Maybe I should've said in one abstaining to give us a total of nine, so, there we go. So we'll, we'll move on to the, uh, item number five on the agenda, which is to consider approving an agreement with Tarleton to provide water service outside the city limits. And, uh, just, uh, I guess I'll ask Mr. Kaiser to give us a, a summary of that.
Let me...
I know we've had a lengthy discussion about this, but just for the...
Yeah, well, let me, I mean, if I may, I'll just refer this to, to, to the coun, counselor here, 'cause he did work on some of the final changes from last week to this week. Uh, the counselor, uh, I believe they're highlighted within your agenda packet. And I'll, again, I know he's worked closely with a couple of you as well. I'd like to maybe just let him point out the highlights of the...
Okay. I basically, I'll, I'll do better. I'll just ask me questions. I think it's fairly explanatory. We're, we're making a contract within the selling water at, uh, the same price as city, uh, folks get it. Let's see, what else on this? We're, we're also having Tarleton agree that they will not sell water outside the city without our approval. It also, uh, requires the, uh, owner, which in this case would be Tarleton, to abide by all the rules and regulations of the city, especially including conservation rules and policies. Now, again, Mark mentioned that the highlighted, some of you may have not, not have seen these highlighted provisions again, so I'm, I'm especially touching on them. Uh, six, number six talks about, uh, Tarleton putting in their own service lines and at their own expense, which, which is also, by the way, uh, following city guidelines. The agreement can be filed in the public records of Eret County, and it's not so important in this case, because that land's not going where it's at, Tarleton. But we put that in there as a covenant running with the land. Uh, and I always advise filing these agreements. We've had a few others, uh, that we've done, and I've advised of filing in the past. And then the other, number eight, is just a general warranty and, uh, agreement about the, the whole agreement of the parties. It's a fairly straightforward and, I think, simple agreement, but I'll be glad to answer any questions if I can.
Any questions for Brandy?
Basically, it sells them water just like any citizen. Sells water to them just like any other citizen?
Yes.
Yes.
Only caveat difference is...
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, yeah, that's right.
Make available to them water and sewer services.
Thank you. The only difference is it has in here the potential to raise that rate to a hundred and fifteen percent, but we agreed in here that it'd be, it's regular rates.
We're agreeing on regular rates, but we can, at our discretion, raise it to, uh, can raise it fifteen percent.
Does that meet your needs? Will that meet your needs?
And I, I might add, we, they also agree that we can annex them, if this may be one of the most important points, that they agree that, uh, they would not protest or oppose future annexation of the acreage.
Number three in the agreement?
Yes, number three.
Thank you, Randy.
Randy, I have a question. With the agreement to sell them water versus annexation, does it change the potential demand on our system? Are there requirements for a demand on our system? Or are the requirements to provide what they, uh, need for their system out there?
The rest, Mark?
I, I can't speak to their need, but, uh, does it require an, an additional demand on our system? And, uh, as we discussed last week, uh, we are able to provide these services. And, and, you know, just so that everybody is aware, excuse me, excuse me. Uh, they had indicated that, uh, they use approximately four million gallons of water, which ultimately would be, in theory, four million gallons worth of sewer services. That would be, uh, on an annual basis, that is, uh, potable water. So we're talking about that quantity that has been referenced to us throughout this project and the discussions. Uh, and, and we're... project and the discussions, uh, and, and we're, we're, we're capable of, of meeting those needs and services. So it does not require us an increase in, it does not require us to do, take any other action, which was kind of back to Mr. Savin's question, I think, earlier, of one of, one of these questions here. So, I said something different, I apologize.
No, no, you, I just, I think you didn't say what it was, I just...
Okay, four mil- four million annually is what they have reported to us.
Yeah, we did some rough calculations on that, and that's only like four tenths of one percent of what we supplied to everybody's...
It is. Just because I'm not sure they can, that everybody can hear you, that is, that is less than, or approximately four tenths of one percent.
Yeah, less than one percent.
Less than one percent. It, it, so I just, so, yeah. Is what, what we're talking about.
Yeah, I was concerned about it till I realized it was such a small amount, you know?
Financiers, okay.
Any other questions? All right, uh, if, if no further questions, I'll entertain a motion then.
I vote that we approve that agreement.
Okay.
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Wagner, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, to approve the agreement as outlined in our package. Uh, any discussion?
Just real quick, Mayor, obviously I think I'm supportive of this, I mean, I think this is what Tarleton needs. I don't, do you have a concern about maybe some precedent that I might set in the future? Uh, but I guess it's something we'll have to deal with as it comes from the councils, or this council and councils in the future, so.
Okay.
But I'm definitely in favor of doing this for...
I likewise feel it's important for Tarleton and, and that partnership that exists between us. I, I'm a little concerned about the precedent we set, and, and the only possible exception that we might be able to find with that is because it is with Tarleton rather than a private developer or someone else seeking similar services from us. But I, I think it's important for us to serve all of our citizens, including Tarleton, in their needs in this case.
Any other comments?
Just want to be on the record saying I'm abstaining from this vote, and I filed an affidavit of conflict of interest with the city secretary.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to get any trouble, Mr. Mayor.
You got any comments?
I haven't, I have no comments. My speech is a scrap once again.
You didn't work on those notes.
It was a good mail.
Overlaunched.
Okay, any other comments? All will proceed to vote then. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries, it's unanimous vote. Um, I, I do want to, I wanted to wait till after we voted to, to reemphasize a point in here, for those of you that, uh, two points actually. The first is that, that we are waiving what, uh, in the ordinance calls for a 15% surcharge. So Tarleton will be charged the same rate, uh, as our city fees are for water and sewer. And we discussed this, uh, last Tuesday because, uh, as we're about to talk about, our, our plan is to look at annexation of this area. And we felt it was important not to, uh, I'll use the word penalize Tarleton because of our, uh, our, uh, interest in furthering the discussion about annexation. And so that's, that's how we've reached that conclusion here, and I, I think it does show, uh, just, uh, kind of like we talked about, the, our intent of partnering with Tarleton as we work our way through this. So, um, we're, uh, that, that's, that's one point. On, on the other side of the coin, though, we, we did want to include the, the conservation rules and policies that, you know, citizens and businesses that are on our water supply, uh, are, are needing. And so that, that'll be a, a part of how this proceeds forward. Uh, the last thing I want to, I want to point out here is that, let's, let's not lose sight of, of the, uh, of the fact that we are blessed in this community to be able to provide water to Tarleton with relatively no impact to our city. Two and a half hours north of here, in Wichita Falls, the city of Wichita Falls, because of lack of planning on their part, has had to tell Midwestern State, you cannot build one or maybe two buildings that they have funding from the state of Texas to proceed with. Stevieville, Texas is not in that situation, and that, we owe that to the, the planning that took place, you know, years ago with our water supply. And, uh, it is a, it's a good news story for us here in this community to be able to support our university, uh, in this manner with, with no, with no, uh, with no impact to our water supply. And so, uh, that, that's a, um, I think that's, that's an important piece of this as we move forward, for us to not lose sight of. This is a, this is a good news, uh, scenario for us. All right, let's move on to the, uh, item number six on the agenda. And, uh, I, I guess I'll introduce this topic because, as Mr. McDaniel said earlier, we, last Tuesday, talked at length about this. Uh, and I asked the staff and the council to hold ourselves accountable with a, a due date to take action on this annexation question, because we should not just sign an agreement with Tarleton and say, well, we, we got that off the, off the docket, let's move on with life. Because the, the good thing about debating and discussing issues is that you understand more comprehensively what, what, uh, factors maybe go into the decision process. And that's been the case here, where we, as a council, realize that, you know, there's some other things tied to annexation that we, we need to discuss. And so we have in our agenda packet tonight a timeline for the development of, of a master annexation plan for area E, which incorporates the 420 acres that have been talked about. But it also looks at other areas, uh, that are important to our community in, in that proximity, the, the 281 corridor, the, the rail line that goes through there, uh, the discussions that I, I know are actively going on right now between Steadco and AgriLife about the potential development of a, of a business research, uh, area, uh, in some of that, that property in, in area E. And, uh, so we have in our, our packet to, to consider tonight a, a timeline for the development that, that starts tonight, uh, and then works its way through, uh, December of this year. And, uh, the Planning and Development Committee, I guess, will, will take, uh, the lead, uh, for this with the council. But one of the things that we're going to ask them to consider is, is who should participate in, in the, uh, the development of this. And our discussions last week included, uh, the city council, uh, Steadco, the chamber, Tarleton, uh, and, and the county, as we come together and look at this area and discuss issues such as the future land use in the area, the need to address thoroughfares in the area and in the infrastructure, which I know is an important topic that we were wanting to look at. And, uh, to look to have a preliminary draft plan completed by September and then, uh, proceed with, uh, action based on the results of that plan. So with that, I'll, I'll just, uh, open the floor for any comments or discussion, uh, from the council.
Is it going to be just area E or the whole plan? Are you, are you targeting that part of?
I think targeting that, limiting, uh, but I, I think it, it, it could be all areas if we wanted to say that. I mean, the, the, the idea is to ensure that we, we look, um, with a concerted effort at area E, but I think your point is, what if something comes up in another area, would we limit our discussions to that?
Well, maybe the committee goes past December 2nd and takes on the rest of the product, rest of the, of the annexation plan. Maybe that's what happens. I don't have a problem with starting with E if that's what you think we need to do. I just don't want us to stop there.
Right.
We need to come up with a, a master plan.
I would agree with Mr. Savin. My concern is if it takes till, till December to do area E, and then we've still got four more areas to take a look at, I just wonder how long the total process takes, and I don't want to, I don't want us to focus so much on area E that we don't look at, at the total picture, Mr. Mayor. It might, it might be appropriate to just do E till December.
Okay. Well, maybe we should just take the four area E out here initially and let the committee get together and then talk about that. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Mayor, I have a question for council.
Randy?